October 12th meeting of the Westford School Committee, welcome everybody. For folks who may be watching us remotely, we are in direct head-to-head competition with Select Board Meeting tonight. And so if you are looking for us on the government Westford Cat channel, you are not finding us, and you should go over to the education channel. But if you're on the government channel looking for us, you do not know that, you're not listening to me, so you don't know to do that. But we did send it, there was an email that went out today, and I imagine you'll find this one way or the other. So thanks to Westford Cat for supporting dueling meetings tonight. And with that, we will stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have moved it up to the top of the meeting as we talked about last time, we might, we might try that. Hopefully everyone has a chance, has had a chance to see the items in the, in the packet that are here, or see the up-to-date warrant information that Valerie sent out. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Can I ask one question on that?
You sure can.
Just wanted to check in on just COVID safety protocols and contact tracing ability for the, the Cirrus overnight trip.
So, Brittany Q and Stephanie Devlin, I see those trips, they, they were approved for later in the year as well. This particular one last spring was denied because it ended up being, in addition to the other field trips that they were taking throughout the year, it ended up being two days out of school, so they've now resubmitted, lessening that to only one day out of school. But I did speak with Bob Ware, who said that every student, it's outdoors, every student has their own tent, made it by themselves, so they are certainly the ability, or need to have the ability to contact trace, and are fully prepared to do that. And where it was outdoors, everyone having their own tent, we felt very comfortable moving it forward.
I certainly presumed that with this group, they were on top of it, but felt that just for the public's notice, we should just be checking in on how something like that would work, so thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda items? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's Valerie with the motion, Gloria with the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, six zero. Thank you. We are on to informational updates, and we'll start with the superintendent.
So this morning, we had Dr. Kalise Warnum join us again for professional development. She had joined us last May, and it was a phenomenal session, and so we were excited to get her back. She came in and she did an entire three-hour Zoom session for all of our faculty and staff. And it was incredibly engaging, which is to say something, you know, for that long of a Zoom session. And one of the things that I can't remember if we shared with you already, but she's also going to be working with our full leadership team. So, to the work that we started together when we were reading the book over the summer that we were all a part of, she's actually going to be working with the leadership team specifically on cultural proficiency and developing that in leaders as well throughout the year. So that, that's also an exciting aspect of this. And we already have feedback from this morning. Did you want to speak to any of that?
Sure, yes, we have about 400 responses so far from staff, and there were about 88% of staff who felt as though the professional development overall was very valuable. When we asked for what else do you want, they said more Kalise. And while we were looking for topics, because we're going to stay on this topic throughout the year, certainly, it was her dynamic presentation that just drew people in and really motivated people, that it left them thirsty for more. So, we were thrilled with the feedback. And beyond the percentage of people who felt like it was valuable, there were some who indicated that they weren't, they didn't participate in her session because they had taken a half-day in the morning. So, overall, the, the feedback was very promising, and we look forward to having her back again. Can I ask, what was the aspect of the professional development in particular that you were talking about?
So she was also talking about culture proficiency. And we spent a lot of, she, she was following up on stuff that she had started last May. We talked a great deal about implicit bias again, and she, she talked about the fact that understanding the hidden rules that exist in a culture is the fastest way to address equity concerns, right? So talking about the things that, the things that, that aren't written, that people just know that that's what, that, that's what you're supposed to do, and when, and when you don't participate in that, or you're not aware of that, then you sometimes find yourself sticking out. And nobody tells you that you weren't following those hidden rules. So we had, we had a lot of discussion about a wide variety of hidden rules that, that people were able to kind of think about. And then that, that also fed into the afternoon sessions at the, at the schools. So each school had an afternoon where they were doing slightly different, more age-appropriate discussions, and using that time to, to support other, other things that are going on as well, too. So, that was kind of the, that was sort of the, I think, the largest segment of the conversation today.
And as we move forward to future professional development days, the early release days are just two hours at a time, the school dismissals are staggered, so it's very hard to bring presenters in during those times. But even more importantly is what happens beyond those specific professional development days. So, Dr. Warnum, as Dr. Chu mentioned, will be coming in to train the leadership team. So all of those additional days, whether it be staff meetings, curriculum or department meetings, professional development, early release days, will be devoted to this, and then our leaders will be more comfortable and able to lead the discussion and help the district, or in their building specifically, grow.
So, I know in the past we've discussed the professional development going beyond just our teaching staff, going to like whole building staff, and there's, you know, this is a contractual obligation of professional development for our teaching staff. But especially when we get into those building-based things, I'd love there to be an opportunity for like the administrative staff, the cafeteria staff, to be included in especially those DEI and SEL discussions, because when you're talking about a whole building culture, it really is a whole building culture. So, I just want to throw another plug out there for if there's any way to include the whole building in those conversations about inclusivity and belonging and cultural proficiency across the board, that the half-days may even be a really good way to do that, so that everyone is on the same page, everyone who faces a child is on the same page.
We have, we, a conversation that we had last week with the, all of the principals, we talked about our conferences coming up. So in November, we have the conferences on the, the 22nd and 23rd, and so we are, we had mentioned it earlier, but we hadn't actually talked about what it's going to look like. We're going to allow parents to be able to decide whether they want a virtual or an in-person conference slot, thank you, appointment. And so what we were trying to decide was that would that make more sense if they were sessioned together to be different things? But what, what we talked about was that it's really just going to be easier for it just to be, these are the slots, and then the parent will be able to determine whether they want to be in-person or virtual, which I think is great. It's going to really provide, I think, a wonderful opportunity for our families. That's something that, that was a really positive takeaway from, from, you know, from being remote, was the ability to have more people participate in, in I think conferences than might have been able to if it was all in-person, or, you know, only in the afternoon, or whatever the case may be. So that's something that I think people will be looking forward to. It'll be, it'll be handled the same way that it's been handled in the past, in terms of the notifications from the schools, when they release the signup geniuses for people to, to access. All of that'll still be the same, but I thought it would be a good thing to kind of throw out there for people to be looking for it.
Just real quick, in a similar vein, I attended the Westford Academy Back to School Night last week. And so similarly, you know, that, that's all virtual, and, and I did have the thought that for a lot of people, that, you know, that, that starts at like 4:15 and goes till eight. And so I think for a lot of families, having it virtual made that, you know, made them able to attend it where maybe they wouldn't normally be able to. Now, there certainly, I think for some people, it would be nice to get in the building and see the building, so I don't know that I would, you know, it's a little different, it's not one-on-one conferences, it's the whole, the whole class or whatever. But I, I just wanted to say that that, that went really well, having it virtually for the second year went, went really well, and just thanks to the WA staff for doing a great job.
Great. We did have a scenario last week where one of our, one of our bus routes was interrupted with a downed tree. And so it led to some, some conversations with parents that I thought I would bring up here, and maybe ask if the policy subcommittee might revisit the accident policy? Because what we realized was that there is a very clear policy that talks about if there's an accident, what needs to happen. But it doesn't really discuss what happens if the route is interrupted but then can continue. So what ended up happening was that a segment of the route was not accessible. And so, I think it would be an interesting thing, I, so I, I kind of asked that, so forgive me for asking at this moment in time, but I thought it'd be a good thing to bring up right now, just to see if it's something that the, the policy subcommittee could explore. Because that, that, that specific policy is very clear about the accident.
Right.
And I don't know if that might be a place to, to review.
So, I know a couple of years ago, we also started to have a greater conversation about looking into some sort of notification app for parents, so that they could get more real-time, something like that, if something like that happens, yes, your bus is delayed, but it will be continuing, stay where you are, kind of thing. So, the policy subcommittee meets again next week, so we'll take that up, and then, yeah, we'll bring that back. Absolutely.
And then, another thing that I kind of wanted to throw out to the community, was that a couple of principals, who as they're putting together their school advisory councils, all of the school advisory councils are supposed to have members of the community on the school advisory council. And sometimes that is easier than, than others, depending on, you know, the, the age of the school, depending, sometimes people whose kids have gone through the school are, are interested and still participating. So, I wanted to mention that tonight, just for our, our community of listeners as well, too, that if that is something that they would ever be interested in helping out with the school advisory council, as a, as a member of the public, as a member of our community, our, our schools are often in need of that. And so they could, they could contact us, they could contact the school directly, too, and see if that's a need that they, that they have.
Do you know if most of them are meeting virtually right now?
I don't know. I know that we've talked about it, and most of them, I believe, it, it was easier for the committee to, to meet virtually. We don't have, we didn't, we didn't say that they had to be.
Sure, sure.
So it, I think so, I think it's kind of all, depending on the makeup of the committee or the council.
And they're looking for, I mean, most councils will have parent spots, but also member, community member at-large spots as well.
It is, it's a, it's specifically someone who is not a parent of someone at the school, someone who is not a staff member at the school, but somebody who is a part of the Westford community. So, it could be there, they could, they could have had a child go through the building, and, and, I mean, in theory, they, they could, they could have their children at another school, right? So it's not that they have to not have kids in the school system, it's just that for that specific school to be on that council, we need people who don't have, because those roles are all already very specifically identified. Right, thank you. And then, the last thing that I was just going to say was, I, I started to try to celebrate our principals on Friday, when I met with them, by giving them some work, which was, you know, it was like, here, this is, this is, I bought this for you, this is going to help you. It was, it was some trauma-sensitive information, which I thought was great, but it, at the same time, really, I want to let everybody know that in, within schools, within the education community, October is National Principals Month. And our principals do a great job celebrating everybody else in their community. I don't think they get celebrated enough. So I just wanted to put that on people's radar, that October is a time when I feel like we should be thanking those building leaders who are, who are doing a lot for their entire community. And they, right now, they, they tend to get more, more, more angry emails than, than friendly emails, so I just put that out there.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. Any questions from the committee?
I was so slow, I was wondering if you were changing your mind.
Nope.
When you brought up student, school advisory councils, it reminded me of something I mentioned to Chris last week, was last year when we had tours, I couldn't make the day school tour. And so, Dr. Sardella?
Yep.
Invited me to attend their virtual school advisory council. And one thing he mentioned, I would, I thought it was a wonderful way to get to know the school, missing the tour. And he mentioned that he knows of the district that school committee members sort of pop in to school advisory council meetings throughout the year, as another way to kind of get that pulse on those individual environments and communities. So, I thought that was kind of a neat way to bring that up.
I mean, they are, they're all, they're, first of all, they're all open meetings, right? So you'd be able to do that anyway. But I think, I think that idea would be fantastic, right? Because, yeah, doing that to, to be supportive, to kind of get a sense as to what's going on. It would be interesting as to whether it was a school, a school council where your children were, or where they weren't. You know what I mean? Like, like, I think, I think there's benefits to both.
Well, and I, I know, I was on, I served on the NAV school advisory council before joining the school committee, and they often talk about their school improvement goals for a lot of it, right? So, it's just a nice way for us to hear more about those, instead of the, like, once or twice that they, you know, present to us here, so maybe we can.
We could send out that, and we could send out that schedule for people, too. Happy to kind of scrape the, the different websites and get, when, try to find out when they meet, and send that out to the committee, just if people are able and have the interest to hop in on one, do so. Would you recommend we give a heads-up to the principals if we're going to pop in? Or do you think they would like the exciting surprise?
I feel like they'd like to know.
Yeah, I, I feel like, I mean, it's not, I mean, your presence is not anything for them to be concerned about.
No, no.
Right, but.
I can't speak for these guys.
I think it's, I think it's, I think that's just always polite. I thought about it myself when I was trying to figure out how I was going to be connecting with more and more families. And the reason why I wasn't planning to do this, is because I feel like my presence could, could totally monopolize a conversation, and whereas the principals trying to run their school advisory council, whereas I don't think your presence would do that. I think your presence would be very supportive in a different, in a different way. So, I, I think if you can let them know, great, but at the same time, if you didn't get a chance to let them know, I wouldn't keep that from going if you had the opportunity.
Can I add one thing on to the other? Thanks. Chris, Chris and Valerie and I met last week to talk about the agenda setting, and in that meeting, we talked about school committee walkthroughs, because I know over the last couple of years, in addition to the facility-focused walkthroughs, you've also enjoyed traveling through the buildings while students are in class. So we are creating a schedule for you, and we're going to have nine dates, one date for each school, and then we'll send it out to you, and if one or two or three of you can make any of the dates, that would be terrific. Dr. Chu mentioned perhaps having curriculum coordinators be the tour guides, so that they can share with you through their lens, some of the things that you might be seeing, or if you have questions around what exactly is happening in the classes, would be a great resource that I think you haven't directly interacted with yet. So, I love that suggestion, the coordinators, thought it was great. So they are actually putting in dates that work for them between now and Thanksgiving time, not right now. It won't be tomorrow, it's tomorrow. And then I'll send you that sheet, and then you can add your name to the school, or a couple of schools that you would like to join.
Right.
So we'll see that in the next couple of days.
Fantastic.
And I think it'll be really nice to walk through with those coordinators. I mean, to have that lens that we haven't had, and just to get to know some of them a little bit better. I'm looking forward to it, so thank you both.
And when we talked about that last week, too, we were letting the principals know that we were, that we were planning to do that, they asked, well, you know, should they be a part of that tour? And at that time, we actually said, I don't think so, you know? I, I mean, if they're available, great, but we really wanted it to be focused on the, on the curriculum coordinators and their lens that you're talking with. So, the principals may be able to join you, depending on what their schedule's like, but as it's not, like, it's, it's going to be a very specific, specific walkthrough, we thought that that would make a lot of sense for them to be your hosts.
Yeah. Fantastic. Thank you. Okay, moving on to school committee updates, I'm going to lead with a reminder to all of our many, many viewers out there, that this Saturday is Westford's Fall Special Town Meeting at 1:00 PM on Trustee's Field at Westford Academy. We need a quorum of 200 people, so please, please come out for that. Some of the highlights are funding the design for the Blantard roof, that's critical. There, there's talk of installing, installing energy charging stations in Westford, that's already happening, but that is a Warren article, right? There's more.
It's the revolving.
It's the revolving, thank you, that's what I'm like, I couldn't remember. Limiting motorboats on Kay's Pond. So please, if you're registered, come and make it, they're thinking it's going to take one to two hours, so this should be a nice one. I think, I have a, I think the weather's going to be decent, right? We have like this warm spell, so I look forward to seeing folks there. I'll just throw it, too, that several of us were at the Indigenous Peoples' Celebration yesterday on the Common. Thank you to the town DEI committee, and Jenny Kravitz in particular, for organizing that event, it was really nice. We, I think we learned a lot about the people who inhabited this land before us, and, and some of what that means to tho, to those people, what the loss of that land means, and what their presence here means to us now. And so, it was a great event, I hope we see more in the future. Other school committee updates. Alicia.
So, policy subcommittee met last week, and if, I hope everyone noticed that in the packet, there's a new feature in the packet today, where it was suggested that we start putting our subcommittee meeting minutes in the packet, so that they're easier to find. I know sometimes on the town webpage, it can be hard to dig through and find those subcommittee, subcommittee meeting minutes. So I love that, I think that's a great feature, and it allows people to really see, as we progress, how the, how the discussions are going, before something comes to the full committee. So we're still working through our organizational meetings, and, you know, lining up the things that need our, the most attention. The thing we discussed that has the most bearing here is we discussed financial policies and the finance subcommittee. So when the finance subcommittee was first put together, the idea was that they would have a hand in finance policy. And in order to not duplicate those efforts, and also run afoul of quorum rules, what the policy subcommittee discussed was that we would, between the two chairs, so Valerie is the chair of the finance, finance subcommittee, and the chair of the policy subcommittee, we would discuss what each committee had on their agenda as far as overlapping policies, but that this year, we were going to have finance policies live with the finance subcommittee. Now, they will still follow our three-meeting process, they will still follow all of our policies on policies for notification, their meetings are public, but since that's where the financial, you know, the financial brains of the district are, that's where finance policy should really be looked into. So, yeah, that's you guys. No pressure. So that was what we discussed, for the most part, in policy subcommittee, that, and we're still looking at, you can see in our minutes, we're still looking at the MASC updates, we're looking at some policies that were brought to us by students concerning controversial speakers and controversial topics, which are actually on the MASC list as well. We're also looking into, so there is technically a policy that dictates that you should have a student advisory committee, which is a different thing than a student council. And it was actually timely, because MASC was discussing, some MASC members were discussing this recently, too. We don't have a student advisory council, we have a student council, and they're actually two different things, so that's one of the things we're looking into, too. And that was flagged by a couple of our students last year as well, in the lens of representation to the school committee and the overall student voice. So, stay tuned for those. Did I get everything?
Thanks.
I think I got everything. Excellent.
Thank you. That's excellent.
Chris, you've got a question at the end of the.
Magna.
I just want to say about the student advisory, I'm one of the delegates for the student advisory council. We're on the Northeastern Regional Student Advisory Council, so I don't know if it is the same thing, but we, there are two delegates from each school, so I'm one of the delegates from Westford Academy.
So, technically, a student council and a student advisory council are supposed to be two separate bodies.
Right.
And it sort of just looks like, over the years, schools have sort of morphed them into the same thing. It makes sense to have most student government live with the student council, but there is actually a law that says you have to have this separate entity.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that you guys are participating.
Yeah.
But because it was flagged as a means of representation by some students, we do need to look into it.
Yeah.
So if you want to, if you'd like to come and talk to the policy subcommittee about it, I, we usually meet during the day, but, or if you want to send us an email with any thoughts you have on that, we would welcome that, most definitely.
Okay. I, I know my delegates, my other delegate's pretty passionate about representation and that sort of stuff, so I'll definitely reach out to you.
Email us.
Okay.
Can I just ask a clarifying question for you, Mike? So it sounds like you're a delegate that goes and meets with other delegates from other schools.
Yeah, so, so the entire organization, I'm sure you guys know, but the chair of the student advisory councils has a seat on the Board of Education, so that's our chair, and then we have all the subdivisions, right? So we're, me and my delegate, we're the Northeastern Regional Student Advisory Council, so I'm the communications coordinator for that council.
So do we have, so you're saying WA has an active student advisory council?
It sounds like your representatives are coming from your student council.
Me, so, so the way that we've sorted it out with Dean Murphy right now, is that since me and my co-delegate brought it to her, she said that for the next, until we leave, we can be the delegates, and then after that, they'll open up the election to the entire school.
Okay. So that's actually good, that you've already had that conversation, because we have it with Dean Murphy.
Yes.
And that may be like the start of what we're looking at.
Yeah.
On the line, so that's great.
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, the student advisory committee, which is different language even than the student advisory council, is supposed to be five members who by majority vote, elect their own chairperson, and serve for a term of one year, and one of them is supposed to be coming to school committee. So it's, it sort of sounds like over the years, what's happened is student council has been that, and they, you guys are clearly here as representatives, but the student advisory committee is a much smaller sort of compact group, and it kind of sort of mirrors the school advisory committees in that sense, that it's supposed to be just a building advisory committee that then sends a delegate to us. So it's not the greater student council, it's a whole other thing.
And it, it will add to confusing layers, because all school advisory councils have to have, well, the nine through 12 have to have a student representative on, right?
Right, right.
So then it would be a question of, is that part of that group, or is that a different group?
Absolutely.
It sounds like we've got like three or four different layers and groups that are looking to pull on, you know, student voice, and we just need to kind of tease apart what, what we have, and what, what we need under the MGL, and how to.
Exactly.
Put those all together.
And we are not.
Let's connect on that, and figure out.
I think, I think it's a very, it's very confusing. Me and my co-delegate, we just like brought this to her, which is why, like, we know about this, because another delegate had talked to us for a while about it. So that's how we like got roped in, but yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty confusing.
And we are not the only district who is confused by this. There are districts who are, who are saying we're supposed to have what now? So yes, we are not the only district who's confused. So I'm thrilled to hear we have the representation, I think we just need to go back and make sure that we're doing it the way we're supposed to according to the MGL.
Yeah, and my co-delegate is like very passionate about all of this, and reform and all of that, so I'll be happy to talk to him about it with you guys.
Excellent.
That's great, thanks, Magna. Okay, other subcommittee updates. Valerie?
Well, thanks for reaching a great segue. The finance subcommittee had their first meeting, that's our, that's our last full committee meeting, and we talked a lot about ARCA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act, and we thought that, do you want to chime in, or we thought that funneling all the requests, like if, if other committee members have ideas for that funding list, to funnel them through the finance subcommittee. On the select boards meeting agenda tonight, they are also talking about a process, they're thinking about breaking it up into two phases. The first phase would be like direct impacts from COVID, and the second phase would be more open-ended uses, so we're keeping an eye on that. We, it came up in joint chairs, we've got some good communication happening, but feel free to, if you have any wish list items that come up, to try to funnel them through the finance subcommittee, so we can keep them in one place, so that we have a list that we will be ready to share with the town when it's time for that process.
And we'll share that with you, we can kind of figure out how we want to manage that list.
Yep.
But, just for committee members, and if the public has anything.
Yes.
You can also email, so we're going to send it to Valerie, as the chair of the finance subcommittee.
Yep. Yep.
Vyoung@westfordk12.us.
It's out there.
There we go. And we, we won't, we, we really will be just collecting and, and, you know, maybe we'll try to merge things that are common, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna apply any filter. I, I do think it's, you can look at it as a brainstorming, you know? I think, you know, don't, don't be hesitant to, to send an idea along if it comes to mind. Catherine.
Just on that ARPA thing, I'm just wondering, um, could this be an option to do something like a forum? Like a community forum? You know, I'm thinking back even to Terry's survey with the E S S E R three funding, which I think lends itself really well, obviously. It's in the same boat. And we had, the first one was social emotional supports for students and the, the third one was also addressing needs of s- special populations. So they kind of fit quite nicely and, you know, I'm wondering something along the lines of the race ethnicity forum almost that you guys did. What is that now? A year ago, eighteen? I can't even remember.
Yep.
That maybe we have an opportunity here to really dive in a little bit more and get some kind of more feedback from the community, which will then in turn give us some short-term and potentially long-term that A can help us maybe guide that list for ARPA, but also even then feedback in longer term with our, even our strategic planning and all of that stuff. So I don't know if it's something people might be open to, but we can do it virtually.
Well, I do think, I think we've held up D E I and S E L as like, like two, are, are two pillars of, that, you know, we're, we really wanna look at. We wanna keep strengthening what we do. I think we've done a lot to do that. But, so it does kind of make sense that we've done that, had that opportunity for the community to engage on that conversation. And I know it's been a long eighteen months for folks. I know S E L is one area where families are really feeling it. We've done a great job, I think, as a district, addressing, uh, the needs of the students and the families. But I, I do also think just generally, it's a good idea occasionally to have an opportunity for people to share their hopes and dreams for the district in a targeted way like that. So I, I, I'd certainly be open and in favor to finding a way to like get those voices in a little bit and let people share their experiences.
I think one of the, one of the things that'll be most helpful will be similar to what we've did with the S R three funds, which is to take these additional comments. If we decide to have a, an open forum for something like ARPA, we need to, I think, be prepared to still use that data for other things 'cause we still are working on our strategic district improvement plan, you know? And so I feel like, or we might even find that maybe, maybe having a specific forum that could cover multiple things might be a better use of our time.
Like an S E L form essentially, but that then guides us for the, for ARPA.
So less soliciting ideas for specific funding and more, hey, what's going on out there? How are people feeling? What are things that are important to you?
Yeah.
You know, uh, what, what has worked well? What hasn't worked well?
I think the, the race ethnicity one seemed to go very well and, you know, good conversations.
And it's, and it's hard conversations and it, and I think it would be for the S E L one too, because it's gonna, we're gonna hear hard stories and, and we're gonna have to loo- look at ourselves in a way too and be like, okay, that, that, that's a, that's something that happened in our district. And, but I think we can do it in a way that is respectful to everybody and gives people that voice.
I think one thing that was really helpful with that previous forum was the anonimen, anon- anonymity.
Do it, yeah.
There you go. So we should, we should, you try to consider that angle as well as we think about planning something like this.
Oh, was it a Google forum or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
I mean, it was probably an airtable forum if we're being honest, right? I mean, who are we kidding, but?
Got that on big.
Oh, 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 I just got a deposit to my bank account. I would wanna, so I'd wanna start talking to you two about how that sounds and how, what, you know, what, what you'd like to see come out of that, what would be most helpful, you think, for the district? And so we could kind of start maybe thinking a few weeks out, how, how we might do that, what's the best way to do that? That's most productive, if that, if that makes sense.
It does make sense and that kind of, I go back to, yeah, the first thing we should do is figure out what is our hopeful outcome, right? 'Cause that could help shape the, at least the question or the purpose or the time that you do it. You know, I mean, whatever the case may be, but I feel like there, there are a number of different ways that that could be done and there, and we're going to be needing input and information from families over the, and different stakeholders over the course of the next year. So, um, we don't wanna saturate people with stuff, so we wanna figure out what, 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 what can we do that would be the most meaningful conversation? I'm just curious as to, as we are collecting all that information, I think it truly can help inform multiple aspects of things that we're looking at.
It occurs to me too, we should reshare the search, um, survey results. We have a ton of feedback from when we did the superintendent's search.
That's right.
On Goals for the District, on feedback from the forums that we can reshare. I can, um, put all that together in some sort of packet so that we can reshare that with you as well.
And I will say, some of that is part of my entry.
Oh, yes.
Right? So some, those are things that I'm looking at, things that we already collected are things that I'm also now looking at, which then could be part of that. So it might, it might, whether, whether this forum would be helpful to me in the entry process or whether it's something that I think should take place after we do the entry findings report. That, that to me would be the, the delineating thing for right now, right? Like it could be helpful, but it also could be overwhelming with all the other things that I'm collecting. In which case I would then want it to be in response to, now that I've shared these findings, having a forum to get additional thoughts and that, that's kind of what I'm thinking, but.
It'd be interesting though, if we did it now, even to compare almost some of the data from, from January 'cause even in terms of, you know, S E L where we were in January to where we are in October, you know, God only knows where our students are at. So it could be an interesting, um, you know, kind of take and, and see where we are.
Yeah.
So could we say that we'll have a follow-up meeting with you two, Catherine, and then maybe one other, maybe one of us? Or we can figure out what makes sense, um, in the coming days?
Yep.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, okay, so we'll talk, we'll talk offline about when to, when to schedule that. Thanks, Catherine. Any other student, or students, any other school committee updates? I'm just so excited to get to the student updates. Tell us what's going on at Westford Academy.
Uh, well, we just have.
The mic.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. I don't have too much for you guys.
Yeah.
What'd you do today?
Apologize. Apologize all day, every day, all weekend.
But we have our spirit rally next Friday, which is really exciting.
Yeah, learning is like in full swing right now. I really don't know like what else is different.
I know we have progress reports sometime like next week.
Teachers are also sort of figuring out, as we're navigating, teachers are also navigating. Like I was talking to a ma- former math teacher of mine and he was saying that like, right now the math department is trying to figure out whether they should be grading kids like more based on effort because last year obviously set everybody back. So are they grading kids where they actually should be? Or are they grading kids, uh, with last year kept in mind? So like, should an A B that's given to a kid really be a C or are they going to like let it be an A? So like that sort of is happening, so teachers are also figuring it out, um, along with kids figuring out our schedules. Some teachers, you know, are being lenient and they're saying, we understand that last year was different. So a lot of late assignments, kids are turning in right now, but everyone's sort of getting the hang of it. Yeah.
I did have one question. For students who test positive for COVID and have to miss two weeks of school, like what hap- if you can't, if we're not allowed to have Zoom classes, that's a ton of work to have to make up. And I think a lot of, I've heard a lot of students saying they're not going to get tested because they're scared to miss two weeks of school, which is like kind of concerning.
Yeah, I know some students, uh, went, uh, 'cause of COVID, 'cause they tested positive, came back. They have a lot of work going on right now.
Yeah.
So that's also another fear.
Some of my teachers have had Zoom calls, like had them join Zoom calls with our classes individually, but I know there's no like school-wide Zoom sanctions. So I don't know if that's maybe something we could consider adding just because I think it would be better for students to not be so overwhelmed with two weeks of missed school.
So I'm gonna interrupt, right? 'Cause honestly, I, I love hearing from you both. You're both saying things that are concerning me a great deal, right? I'm gonna go back right away just to honestly, I, I, I wanna go back to the math conversation, okay, to start there. So we know, all of our teachers know and the entire district knows that our kids are coming from someplace different than when they normally start the school year. I hesitate to ever use the word learning loss because the reality is, is that there are things that everybody learned that we're not necessarily assessing, right? It's a little bit different. So the idea, I totally hear that concern, right? And so when I say that it concerns me, it's not that I'm upset, I'm not upset with either one of you. The idea that people would be worried about that, both students and teachers, is something we must address. And it's something that we've talked about. It's something that Dr. Cleary and I have talked about over the summer. We talked about from the very beginning of the school year. I'm also gonna say this, it's something that our families need to hear because our community puts a tremendous amount of pressure on very specific expectations. So we've been trying to tell all of our teachers that we're not in a race to meet a very specific point that was predetermined before COVID, right? Which means that we're all in this together to kind of figure it out along the way. Because to your point, Hannah, no one should be afraid to miss school because, because they're not well, right? I mean, people be concerned about their own well-being, absolutely, but it shouldn't be, oh my gosh, I'm sick and I can't go to school and I'm scared now about what I'm gonna miss going to school. Like, we need to work on that. We need to work on that collectively as a, as a community because that's too much pressure to put on students. It's too much pressure to put on teachers. It's too much pressure to put on families. And, and I know there are people out there right now who are probably not gonna agree with me, but it's just not realistic either, right? Like the reality is, is that people do get sick. And that was one of the conversations we had, is that every single year, students in Westford Public Schools miss a week of school. And the school works with that family, works with that student to figure out when they're ready to, to come back and to access their education, then they're gonna, then all the supports will be there, right? So for somebody who's afraid because they're gonna miss ten days of school because they test positive, one of the things we've talked about is not having a one-rule-fits-all scenario because the reality is, is that some people will be sick and they won't be able to access anything. Some people will not and they would be able to do work. So we've been working with the teachers to stay connected with the students. Some will be able to get work done. Some will be able to keep, um, you know, be able to, to keep up with, with work that's going on. And some will have to come back and we'll have to figure out a way to bring them up to speed wherever they need to be. Age-appropriate, because there'll be a lot of classes where someone will say like, listen, those two weeks of time, that's really important, but we're not able to really redo that. So we're just gonna move on. You know what I mean? So those are the things that we really wanna make sure that people are, are hearing because for anybody not to get COVID tested because they don't wanna miss school, honestly, that's foolish. It's foolish. It's dangerous, right? People shouldn't be taking risks like that because of, because of a class at the academy. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So if I have to re-articulate that and re-communicate that, I will certainly do that. I will say, I know a lot of those conversations took place today too. 'Cause when we were talking in the professional development and people were able to talk with different departments and talk with their colleagues, people were able to kind of explain a little bit more as to what's going on. And we talk about the hidden rules. One of the hidden rules that came up in the chat, which disturbed me to no end, was that at the academy, an eighty is failing. And that's nothing that the teachers would ever say, 'cause that's not true, right? But that there's this, there's this expectation that if you get an eighty, that you, it's, it's a bad grade. I'm like, oh my gosh, that's, what are we doing, you know? So I know I just kind of got on a soapbox there, but, but what you guys were saying was, it just kind of, it pushed me to say that. I think there are some things that we just have to clarify. And I clearly need to do a better job communicating that. If there are people who are saying, well, is this A really equal to last year's A? That's just bad education. That is bad education. We should be assessing the kids where they are and moving them to the next place where they need to be. 'Cause I tell you, we all know that the S A Ts did make modifications, right? The A P tests did make modifications. They all did because they had to figure out what they were gonna do because, well, that's a whole other business, but that's, that's besides the point.
Principal Antonelli and I are meeting this week. He has brought forward some of the concerns, you know, about where, how to recalibrate based on what happened last year. And, um, there, in no instance should school get in the way of learning. And if we're giving fake As or, or, I'm sorry, fake Bs or Cs, even though somebody's performing at an A level given what they've been taught this year based on what they learned from last year, it goes against everything that we've been doing over the past seven years. However, teachers need clarification. They're, they're used to being at a certain spot or around a certain spot at a certain time. And so that does cause some anxiety amongst the teachers and we, we will be communicating that to each department. And I think math, it, it tends to get most difficult in math because it's so incredibly sequential.
Well, and, and we've honestly done such a great job calibrating, right? So we've, we've been calibrating classrooms and, and grade levels in schools for so long that we have all these fantastic benchmarks, that they just know that this is the September benchmark. They know that this is the October benchmark or whatever the case may be. And so the reality is, is that we, we really need them to make modifications because they can't assess something that hasn't been, that hasn't been taught, that hasn't been introduced in the class yet. And that might be some of the challenge that we have to kind of help them with. Sorry, Magna.
Well, I just wanted to say also, like, I, I'm sure it is sad, but for it to be emphasized during these professional development days, like compassion is still really important. I think that especially in the math, um, category, sometimes that sort of message can get lost. Because math is so, is such an objective thing, like you either get it right or you get it wrong. But to your point about like you saying no teacher would ever say that an eighty is failing, I don't know what's being communicated, but like very frankly, like as a student in our classrooms, sometimes we're told differently than like maybe what's told to you. Like, I know in so, in my math class, like, my teacher will say repeatedly, we'll have pop quiz and he will like repeatedly say like, if you're not, if you're not getting a hundred percent, you're not where you need to be. And it's like repeated multiple times throughout this class. And like, obviously I've gone to my guidance council, but my point is like, just reiterating that point, that compassion, like we're still not done with COVID. Like students are dealing with mental health. Students are trying to figure out how to balance everything. And then going into junior year, senior year, those are stressful. Like last year, we were set back and then to have to go double because you're doing the A C Ts, S A Ts. Like, I feel like sometimes that message of compassion and mutual respect is like sometimes lost. Because I think sometimes there might be this narrative that, okay, now it's next year, let's pick it up and let's try and make up what we, the time that we lost and everything. So just like, especially within the math, um, category of teachers, I just, I think that that message should be really iterated.
All right. Yeah, thank you, guys. I think there might have been hesitation to bring that up. I don't know if there was or not, but I am really glad you did.
Yeah.
I really appreciate your response. I think it was very clear, um, and I, I, I think, but I think, yeah, like, don't hesitate to bring things up.
There's like a hesitancy because it, I'm, don't mean that I don't appreciate everything that the teachers do. They, they make a lot of sacrifices to help us, but there are sometimes some shortcomings, just as there's shortcomings with students. So, I mean, I was hesitant.
Well, I think there, there is a disconnect, right? So what you're talking about, whether it's, whether it's, whether it's intentional, whether it's not intentional.
Yeah.
You're, you're describing a, a genuine disconnect, right? And so we have to, we have to make sure that, that we are all truly on the same page. And as we know, different people, compassion, I love the fact that you use that word. People do show that differently, right? And so that's another thing that we know. So that's why we focused a great deal about talking about truly the most important thing in education is relationships. It absolutely is. And so I sound like a broken record when I talk about that, but I have seen the track record. I have seen the, the, the effects that it has. I've seen the 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 effects that it has, I've seen how how it can transform places. And so, so it's something that we have to keep reminding people is that it's about the relationships that we're developing. And you both know that everybody is different, right? So the relationships look different, but it should always be grounded in mutual respect, right? Caring. The students need to know that the teachers care a great deal about them as individuals. Not just as a collective body, but as individuals in the class. And so we just have to do more work.
And again, to acknowledge that it is a weird time, where I do feel like it was very clear in the past, you know, last year that it was a concerted effort to make sure that we are meeting students where they're at, to take the pandemic pandemic into consideration. But with this year, it's not surprising that there's a sort of sense of, you know, lack of clarity just in the air about, wait, are we back? Are we back? You know, and I think, I think that's what we're hearing. And so it's, it's understandable, right? I mean, we all, I think we're all feeling that. Like, are we normal now? We're not normal yet, are we? But, yeah.
Well, it's it's the same thing with, you know, with people with feelings and opinions about masks, right? People have, some people have different feelings about standardized tests and the assessments that we should be giving and the benefits of it. And then other people think like, why are we even talking about it, right? And I think there's a, there's truly a strong argument for both. And it's that same kind of a thing. We wanna make sure that at the end of the day, the the worst thing would be if the students are caught in, you know, in a, in a, in a fray that that that's putting them in a place where they, they're feeling more stressed than is already natural being an adolescent.
Yeah.
I feel like we had a really similar discussion when we talked about homework policy. And there were these hidden rules and expectations on our staff, and that our staff felt that that for a certain grade level or for a certain class, that they had to be assigning homework every night, or that they had to be assigning a certain amount of homework. And the ramifications were felt at the student level. So I think here is another case where we need to change expectations at the staff level and that the staff may be thinking, this is the the curriculum, this is the material I need to cover in a particular class. And my students aren't prepared for that. I'm rewinding a bit. How am I, uh, do I have to teach that? That may need to be foundational work that they need to access the material I normally teach, but do I have to compress it all? Like, I'm sure our teachers are feeling that stress. So I think if we alleviate that stress and ha, and departments are having open conversations about that, that that's gonna alleviate the stress on the students. But but we need, we had to ha, go through that process and conversation um, about homework policy. And I think we need to specifically have that conversation again now, based on this situation, cuz absolutely. I, and I can imagine it is playing out differently in the elementary schools. For third graders who are moving to the fourth grade, the fourth grade team can all talk about how they're adjusting. It's a little trickier with some of the classes at the academy when you're supposed to be teaching trigonometry, but to have success in trigonometry, some of the foundational skills from prior classes may not be there. And how do those teachers adjust their their teaching? That may be a little bit more complicated um, for certain departments.
So across the board, on, again, on Friday, we were having this conversation with all of the principals. It came up again today in in the, in the professional development. That what everybody, all of the different anecdotes that people were sharing from their grade levels. What came across the board is that what we know is that our students in general, as far as school is concerned, are just less mature than their, than they would typically be had they gone through this whole process. So I'm not saying that students aren't mature. I'm talking about the, I mean, honestly, in so many ways, you had to grow up in ways that your your peers would not have otherwise. But when it comes to certain classroom expectations, I mean, again, you you could both imagine the idea that there are, there are now juniors, right, who never really experienced WA in the same way that others did with freshman and sophomore year. Cuz we were talking about second graders who have never really been in a classroom before, right? And so like, the dynamics that comes along with forming that community and the expectations that one has when you're being respectful to each other and learning how to listen to each other, it's kind of that same idea where it has a, it has hit everybody. And so we really need to be adjusting to that, to say, okay, wait a second, instead of just, instead of just thinking, oh my gosh, the students are not where I expect them to be, we have to focus on where are they?
Magna?
Um, actually, I just thought about like another potential concern I just wanted to bring up, um, was that so after I had gone to my guidance counselor, I said, is there any way I could switch into the same course level, but a different teacher? And he said that that's like not an option. Too many people have already asked, and like, that's not an option. So I said to him, like, so the choice is either you stick through the course with a teacher that just might not be the right fit for you, or you drop below. You drop down to the the um, course level that's like not right for you. And it was, he was like, yeah, unfortunately, like, I don't agree with it, but those are the choices that you have. Either like you suffered through a class where the teacher's not right for you, but you can do it at that course level. Or you dropped, dropped the course and go a level below with the course that's not at the same level where you should be. And so that was just like another concern. There's also so many, apparently, a lot of students have asked to switch out of that class. And so now the choice is either you drop or you stay. And so that was a concern. And even my guidance counselor was agreeing that, yeah, unfortunately, that is, that's a messed up choice that you have to make.
And Carrie, you can kinda not, that could be more a peculiarity of just the the nuances and difficulty of scheduling. Cuz I know how difficult it is to make all the pieces line up on that grid. And I, cuz, you know, so I think that's probably more, less policy, more practice and reality of the the puzzle.
And I would recommend just touching base with um, either the math teacher or um, curriculum coordinator or a dean or the principal. Um, I wa, I just don't wanna get too granular at this table.
Yeah.
It starts to point to a specific individual.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Any, any, anything fun or light? So moving on to, that was a very good update, by the way, everybody, that was great. Public comment. Public comment.
Oh, good.
Hi, public. Do you have comments? Okay, spectating. Um, folks at home, if you can hear me, the six of you on Zoom, uh, i- i- if you do wanna join us for public comment, uh, you can raise your hand in the Zoom window and I can bring you in. But no pressure. Okay. Seeing no hands raised, we will move on to our seven thirty-five item, COVID update.
So the first part, the testing in schools. So I I was part of a webinar, an invited webinar today. Where they were talking about offering assistance with the National Guard for specimen collection, which I thought was in intriguing. Um, we do have a new district coordinator. We we have been able to hire a registered nurse who's gonna act as our district coordinator, who's gonna be overseeing all the communication with CIC Health. So I'm optimistic that before our next meeting, our test and stay program will be operational and up and running. Um, we have mu, most of the logistics in place. We just really need to make sure that we have everybody onboarded and and, you know, ma- make sure that they're, that they have what they need in order to, to, I think, expedite that process. Um, which I think is great, because there, that that's been something that we've been, that we've been struggling with trying to get going. So I don't think we're going to need the National Guard uh, to help us with the test and stay program. Um, but it was an interesting piece that, you know, that I learned about today, that they were talking about.
We've hired an RN, but we're also getting the the CIC provided.
Right, so CIC is providing a pro, a a virtual program coordinator. So that person doesn't, isn't actually here on premises. And they actually will also help us, like the National Guard. They will, they have people that they said that they will provide who will actually help with some of the specimen collection. Our district coordinator is going to be responsible for all of that communication, talking with the families, talking with the schools, helping to upload the data and gather the data and the continued contact tracing that might be necessary through all of that. Um, so that's, that's where we're at at this moment in time. And I will send something, because it's taken so long for us to get this going, then I, not only will the nurses know very clearly when it's up and running, so they can provide that information. But I will also provide that information to families directly. Um, so we'll know when it is. If we can have it running next week, fantastic. If not, it should be the week after, um, which I think is, which will be helpful. Uh, in terms of the, in terms of the DESI shifting um, guidance and and mask mandate, right? So the the mask mandate was shifted to November first, so I communicated that to families. I created a survey that I did get some people's, I got some negative feedback on the survey because they didn't like the fact that you could only submit it if you were attesting to the fact that you had been vaccinated. That was the point of the survey, so I apologize for any frustration that that might have caused for some people. But it was specifically just for WA students, because they were the only students that we would possibly be able to get eighty percent of the population um, to prove that they've been vaccinated. And so it wasn't asking for proof of vaccination, it was specifically saying that they can provide proof of vaccination. I never said we weren't going to ask for proof of vaccination either. Um, and the results, uh, the results are actually interesting because I feel like, I feel like that in itself is telling me, I wasn't asking for people's opinion and I wasn't asking for this to be evoked. But in essence, uh, people have have spoken, if you will, uh, less than a quarter of the students have this, have the survey submitted, less than a hundred in each grade. So I have, currently, I have ninety-nine surveys from the junior class, ninety-two surveys from the senior class, ninety-one from grade nine, and ninety-seven from grade ten. So it's only a quarter of the population. So we would not be anywhere near being able to reach the eighty percent. And this is by their own choice of participation in this survey. So we have the, hold on, what's, hold on, we have the, we have the, um, we know that as far as the mass, you know, the Massachusetts, I can't remember the information system that it's called, but it's.
Maven. Maven.
But it's not Maven that actually tells us what our vaccination rates are.
MIS.
Okay, information system, there we go. Um, so that says that we clearly have over um, eighty percent. We have over ninety-five percent of our sixteen to nineteen-year-olds here within our, within our town. But we need to know, are they, are they all at the academy? Are they going to different places? Families responded to me saying that they didn't believe that the the survey was valid. Some people thought that people would lie about it because I wasn't asking them for proof of vaccination. So therefore, they weren't going to submit it because the results would be false. So when, to only have a quarter of the population respond at that moment in time leads us still with, well, we still don't have enough data to say that we can do this, so we're looking to see what the November first date is. Plus, the the layered impact that the Board of Health
Right.
decision has, which doesn't give us the option on October fifteenth to exempt anybody. So that's where we're at with that data information.
I'm gonna get the furrowed eyebrows.
Real quick, and Hannah, I I just wanna slide into what Dr. Chu just said. So two things. One is, I did talk to the Board of Health Chair, and they're open to an ongoing conversation about the relationship between that mask mandate
Okay.
and our own desires or whatever. So, well, well, you're correct, that right, right now, that's a superseding, you know, mandate. Um, they're open to, if we were interested on, in moving in one direction or the other, to also adjusting the mandate, if, you know, if that helped us. So we said we'd coordinate on that. Uh, the other, I would say, yeah, so it sounds like people spoke with their, with their, with their form filling out or lack.
I was very clear as to why I was asking for the data, I thought. I was saying that in order for us to consider
Yeah.
exempting anyone from not wearing a mask, we need to have over eighty percent. So I think the majority of people read that and some people thought, I don't want you to consider that. So I'm not gonna participate and I'm not gonna give you my number to count, if you will.
I definitely think that's the case. Some people, I I suspect other people just, it's in an email and I didn't.
And that's true.
I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent of the people who didn't do it, like, just, as a parent, we all know how that is, right? Yeah, I did see that. Ah, I didn't.
Was staff involved in that as well?
The staff, the staff response um, was a hundred, it was actually close to the whole staff. They had, I, it was a separate survey.
Oh.
Uh, a hundred and thirty-six staff members from the academy, which I'm, I haven't connect, I don't exist, no exactly. But I wanna say that's incredibly close to almost everybody.
Okay. So is that building staff as well, like cafeteria, et cetera?
It's supposed to be.
Yeah. Okay. And um, you probably don't have an answer yet because we're not even close to asking for the proof yet. But just a plug for the reminder of the DBUS, because they're not our employees, they're D's employees.
Yeah.
Um, because parents are asking, well, how will we know about the DBUS employees being vaccinated as well? So just throwing that out there again.
Yeah.
Hannah, sorry, I I wanna come back to you.
Um, I cannot find that survey anywhere in my.
It went to your parents.
So how would the students fill it out?
Then like go in grade.
The parents fill it out for you.
It actually, the, yeah, the actual, be, honestly.
Or not.
Yeah.
But.
This, 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 it was who's filling this out for the, where the cameras are, to make sure. Um, it, it, the, the first question was who, who was filling it out? And it did, it went, Mr. Antonelli sent it out to the families.
Families.
I believe.
It went out in multiple emails for Mr. Antonelli.
Oh, so is that why you were stating the grades and the parents of the students and?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's right.
So, does that make sense? Yeah, I don't think it was something, this isn't something that they pushed out through advisory.
No, yeah, that's why we're looking.
Yeah, yeah.
Does it need to be a parent to fill it out? I'm just wondering, cuz it's medical information.
They're under eighteen, probably.
Well, that's what, I I, yes, it, I mean, we're asking them to attest to it, you know.
So the question I had, and I am not suggesting that we do this tomorrow and don't, don't email me here, but the MIS system, I know it's relatively new. I don't know how it works, but I don't know anything.
Do continue.
But there's a but here. It is to be used by health professionals at schools to check vaccinations. I would imagine, so for example, if anybody's ever done a Corey check.
Yep.
You can like type in all the information, or you can have an Excel spreadsheet and you upload it to Corey and it will go through, you know, I don't know, a hundred, it'll go through a hundred Corey checks, not like that. It actually emails you later and says, they're done, come get them. But I would imagine that it could be possible that they would do like a bulk upload to MIS, but I don't know. So just saying, it could be at some point, if we were really, again, I know people, by evidence, but sort of, some people don't want us to speed this along, and I'm not saying we should. But it would also answer the question of are people gonna tell the truth?
Yeah.
Which is, can we just, can we just check it by taking a student roster and submitting to MIS?
With the thou, with thousands, you know, with a, with twelve hundred or whatever, where fifteen hundred students, I wouldn't wanna try to check fifteen hundred students' vaccination through that system specifically. But we do have access to it and we would be able to randomly check it. We would be able to check specifically if we, if we had reason to believe that somebody was not being honest in the first place. Um, and I hadn't actually decided whether or not we were going to ask for proof of vaccination. I had some people say, I have to have proof for, of, you know, of a tetanus shot, but I don't have to have proof of vaccine. Well, the difference here is that there are, there's, there, there's, there are laws that say what you have to have, well, how you have to be vaccinated in order to be a part of school. There is no law that says that you have to have the COVID vaccine to be, to be in in school. So that's the difference between the proof that we require of other things and the proof that we're, I was trying to gather information without making it as complicated as possible in the first place. But we have, there are other things that we can still do.
How do we verify, how do we verify the other vaccination reports? Is it just that because you require?
They do, you have to provide, yeah, you have to provide, you have to.
From the doctor. So that's verification and we don't necessarily go back and check on that.
Cuz I mean, it is the same thing as somebody, somebody showing their, their COVID vaccine card.
Right, right.
It is, it's similar to that, but, but I didn't want to have people have to upload that into a survey at this moment in time in order for this purpose.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah.
Anything on, um, I I saw the second part of the agenda item was numbers. Did you wanna talk to any of the numbers? I think the dashboard's up and running.
Yeah, we've been posting the numbers, so I don't know if anybody has questions about the numbers. I, we do have a, um, a, a, a chat with the commissioner tomorrow. I don't know if he's gonna be providing any more information as to thoughts about November first or not, based on the numbers in general. Um, I'm not sure yet.
That was my next question, was whether we've heard anything from them. And I, I can say, but I've been keeping track of the Westford numbers and, you know, they, they really shot up in late August and in September. Kind of plateaued. They dipped in the past couple of weeks, but, or a couple of weeks ago, but they've been kinda steady and still at pretty high levels. Still, still high by CDC designation, just for anybody who's interested. Okay, anything else on the COVID update, Alicia?
Adding to the list. Adding to the list of things you never thought you'd have to discuss, I've heard from several parents, and I'm one of them, I am one of parents, we're having a bee problem at lunch.
Yes.
And I don't know that there's a solution that this body can come up with, but I need to bring it forward because there's lots of kids who are, apparently there have been some sting, so, some kids stung.
At most of the schools.
Yes. I heard at Stony last week from my middle schooler that the cafeteria staff was putting bowls of applesauce away from the children to lure the bees away.
That is, I heard that.
So, I don't know that there's a solution from this group and it's, yet another one of those random things that you're like, are we really talking about this? But bees at lunch are a concern, so I don't know if there's conversations going on at the leadership level. I know we're really struggling to make sure that we're distancing and being safe, and that's part of the problem, but
I do know that the principals are, the principals have been talking about it with their custodial staff to see what, what they would naturally do, right? And then we find out that this is a little bit more widespread. It is the lovely challenge of right now there are people watching who are angry that their kids aren't eating outside and there are kids who are angry that their kids are eating outside, right? And so like you add the bee, the bee conversation into it. It, there was this interesting thing with applesauce, like that really, that happened in multiple places. They first discovered that it was, applesauce was really attracting them and then, so then they decided to, let's do an experiment and they put the applesauce in different places to see if it could, if it could get the bees to go elsewhere. We are, we are investigating it to see what we can do.
Just add it to the list of National Guard and bees and all the things that we have to discuss this year, so.
Did you have a solution to the bee problem?
Well, I was just gonna say, it's like really bad to the point where like you can't even like sit there and ignore them. Like, they're, so, half the, actually almost the entire outside population that day that I was there on Friday, we all just like left. But I was talking to Ms. Murphy about it and she just said that like, that I think the first frost needs to be laid and then,
Mm-hmm.
Because the thing is, also students are like leaving, I think it's partially that there's a bee infestation, but I think also students are like leaving their like fruit stuff, like, or it can fall on the table and like the fruit juices are like very sweet, right? So that's what, so it's like the food being on the table is mixed with like, I think there's definitely a bee, but it's like bad to the point where you can't, you can't eat outside.
Oh, wow.
But she said that, I think the only solution at that time right now is like for the first frost to come and then they'll go.
Which isn't happening very soon.
No, that's part of it is we've been unseasoned.
I, I know, but I just, I didn't think there was any solutions, I didn't bother bringing it up.
Okay, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is financial updates, starting with the special education stabilization account.
So, did you see what, I hope you were able to look and see what Pat was, put in the, in the packet. It was in response to the question that we had earlier when she gave her presentation. So she's just provided this in there and if I can answer any questions, I will, but we were hoping that, that you would vote on that this evening.
So it would be a vote to approve those deposits which have, that occurred during the FY twenty-one school year. Okay, do I hear motion?
Motion to approve deposit to the special education stabilization account for this school year twenty twenty-one and name thirty of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Gloria with the second. Any questions or discussion? Good night. Thank you, guys.
Small discussion, which actually may not even really be necessary for this part, but I'd like the finance subcommittee to look at this as part of your process this year and determine how we review this in the spring and make sure that we are regularly doing that, because I know that there was some miscommunication last year, COVID craziness. But to make sure that we are keeping this as up to date as possible and to include that in the conversation around both budgeting and any turnback funds that happen, because this is one of those things that if we can use this to stabilize special education, it will help us down the road. And I wanna make sure we're using it to the fullest extent that it will help us.
Yep, thank you. All in favor? Okay, unanimous, six oh.
Okay.
And then substitute compensation history.
So, Pat was able to look back at the line items from previous years to get a sense as to if we were to move from eighty to a hundred dollars, the, the potential impact of that could be, looking at our historical numbers. So that's what this document shows, that if, if we were to do that, you know, just the, the range, the adjustment for twenty nineteen would have been about seventy-six thousand dollars if, if we were to increase that. We talked with the leadership team specifically to figure out, you know, what their average sub needs were and it did, they did seem to think that it was, with the exception of the academy, just because they have a much larger staff, that it, it's about two to three per day. They don't get that, right? So that's the challenge, is to actually look at the need when we go back into frontline to look and see what those numbers are. Those numbers aren't accurate because we haven't had the subs to fill the need. So we had to go with what the need is, just like, if you remember a few years ago, we made adjustments so that teachers could use their prep time to, to cover a class, which is, is effective six through twelve, and that helped us with our sub line item. But that doesn't help at the elementary level, and it doesn't help with every single course, six through twelve. It just allows for more potential coverage in grade six through twelve because they're content-based assignments. So, where we're at is that, I will say, we, there was, there was a miscommunication in that the, the principals, we, we all thought, and when I was a principal last year in the spring, we all thought that this was moving to a change. And then we discovered that it, it just didn't happen. It didn't, it didn't end up happening. So then we're le, left with, okay, well, is this, is this something that we can effectively adjust now? Or is it something that we have to wait to build into the budget? If we are able to effectively support it now with some of the funds that are one-time funds, even to help us with a shortfall at this moment in time, in, in, in coverage, could we still budget it, build it into the budget? Or would we need to go back to, you know, a lesser, a lesser daily rate? That's, that's gonna be part of our, our, really our budget conversation with Pat as we go, as we go through. So I don't have that specific answer, but I do wanted to bring that historical information to you for this discussion.
And can you talk a little bit about just where the need has been for substitutes, which, which is underlying a lot of this conversation, which is we are not getting enough substitutes and the impact that
We're not, we, and that's one of the questions, is if we changed it, would we get a higher, would we get more of a pool? We'd like to think that we would, because we do have some subs who are choosing to go to neighboring communities that have a higher sub rate, right? But, the person who could speak most directly about the impact would be Dr. Cleary, who was subbing classes last week.
Which was
Which she did enjoy. She did enjoy it.
I loved every second of it, but it does show that we are in a substitute crisis and that morning at the Abbott School, there were seven unfilled positions. We have oftentimes reached out to principals, just trying to connect with them on the phone, and they can't talk because they're substituting in classrooms. And this is, actually, we had an elementary advisory council meeting, which is all of the elementary leaders, the principals, assistant principals, coordinators. And we went around and talked about what is, what is the biggest concern right now. And across the board, it was substitutes. And so, if anybody is listening out there and has any available time, please contact HR so that you could come have fun with kids for a day. So it is, it is, it has been a problem in the past. We haven't been able to fill all of our sub vacancies pre-COVID. But at this point, this is really adding an extra layer of stress that's pretty significant.
Can I ask, Carrie, what's the reason for, like, I know obviously it's always tricky to find subs, but is there something specifically, is it specifically COVID-related or, you know, what's creating so, such a huge need for substitutes?
The need is not greater.
So the need hasn't increased?
I, I don't, I don't believe that the need is any
Okay.
Different now. Matter of fact, it's less than even last year, when I think there was, when we didn't know as much and we were really in, before the vaccine and we, we were really encouraging people, you know, to, to, to stay out when we were dealing with the hybrid scenario. And so, we're not seeing an increased cause for it as much as
Lack of.
The pool just isn't there. And I think to Carrie's point, what we are seeing is an incredibly taxed group of building leaders as well too, who have been filling in as one-to-one TAs, who have been filling in for this class and then turning around and filling in, all while they still have, you know, the, the lion's share of their work that, that's still waiting for them because they don't have anybody who's gonna be supporting them with their work, so that then that's gonna take, and or just the idea of coming into the building in the morning and not knowing what kind of support's gonna be there. And so it's, it's, it's virtually impossible to, to plan their day, right, at times. So I feel like that in itself has become incredibly stressful. Tom?
Does this bring us up to comparable rates to people around us? I, I mean, this effectively, from eighty to a hundred, this would effectively put us in a competing range?
I, I believe so, but I, I honestly can't say that with certainty because I didn't get a chance to cross-reference that. I'm going off of the the decision that we talked about last year going with this, but I can, I can, I can verify that.
There's another district I know who do like a hundred and ten.
Yeah, I do know there are some that are a hundred and ten, there are some, yeah, I, I know some of the other larger districts are even more than that.
Gloria?
So, th, this is interesting that we are hearing this and that this may have been discussed at the leadership level last year, because I, I I don't recall this ever being discussed at the school committee level last year and, and wasn't necessarily part of the budget discussions last year. I think if it had been, we, we would have been supportive of it at the time. We know that this has been an ongoing problem. This is an ongoing problem that now, you know, may be hitting a, a perfect storm with COVID. So, while I know we are kind of cautioned against using one-time funds to, to make a type of adjustment that we would need to build into our budget later, this might be a, a situation where we're comfortable making the one-time adjustment because we're saying, for the duration of COVID, for the duration of this school year, for example, we will be at a hundred a day. We're not, I think we should be clear with our substitutes that we can't necessarily promise that's what the rate will be next year until we've gone through the budget cycle for next year, but
It wouldn't be different, it wouldn't, sorry, it wouldn't be different than what we did last year when we did guarantee people that we would give them that, because we couldn't go down to forty dollars to have somebody help us in the morning in person, so we stuck with our day rate of eighty dollars and then, and then we were able to utilize them to help us with, with some other things as well too, but it would be similar to that, knowing that this is the scenario right now.
Right.
As opposed to permanent.
So I think as long as we're being honest, this is the scenario right now and we're using one-time funds to cover that, and then as the budget process, you know, gets underway, if that can be built into the budget for next year and we can maintain that rate going forward, I think that would be, would be helpful to solve the acute problem and hopefully also the longstanding problem. But, so, I, I think with those caveats in mind, I, I'd be supportive of it, but, but I don't know. But, you know, obviously, it sounds like leadership and, and you and Pat need to have some, some more discussions before we come back to that for a vote, but, you know, in theory, I, I wanna put it out there that, A, this wasn't brought to us last year, so we did not know that, that was even being discussed at the leadership level, but I think if it had been, we would have supported it then as well. So, let us know what we can do to help, I guess is the message I'm trying to send.
So, I wanna echo everything she said and a quick Google search tells me that the surrounding communities are mostly in the ninety dollar rate, so this would put us at a slight competitive edge. So watch the better. Thank you, Google.
And I was always, I was under the impression that it was an hourly wage and that it was fifteen, because I remember when we brought it up to fifteen because the minimum wage changes, but
It's a daily rate, but when you divide it by the hours, we ended up being below, but it's
We raise it to, well, the equivalent of fifty dollars an hour.
Equivalent of, exactly, exactly.
And so how do you, how do you two wanna proceed with this? What, what happens next?
Well, I think, I think the, the first thing would be if, if we were to even just look at temporarily raising it to a hundred dollars, then it's gonna impact our, the line item, the sub-line item, right? And then, if we're then prepared for that and we're keeping track of it, so that we can be communicating to you where we're at with that line item, I think then we would know, all right, are there, are there ARPA funds that we would want to look at to help support that specific line item, what, for the temporary, for this year? While we look to see, as we build the budget, whether this could be a permanent thing, we would need to build it into the budget. So, that would be my, I would, I would want you to, to, to approve us raising, raising it, raising the, the daily rate, whether it was to ninety or whether it was to a hundred, that's something we can talk about. Knowing that it's going to impact the line item as we go through the year and we'll keep you informed, or that that could be something that we add to, you know, the, the, the reports that, specifically that Pat is preparing for you, we could ask to have that pulled out just so that you could see where we're at with that.
Okay. Tom?
I mean, this seems kinda imminent, right? Chris, I, I mean realistically, we should probably be voting on this at our next meeting if we're going through, correct?
Yeah.
Like, I need the substitutes now.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, if there's anything that we can do temporarily to boost more applicants, like, just tell us, 'cause this, this seems like, as a parent with children in the district, I mean, it's a little concerning.
Well, I think we, I think we definitely want to encourage people who would, who would consider it to, to reach out to us, right? Because we did this in the past and we actually created, we simplified the process, making it a Google form. And then there were some people, not as many people applied who, who made us think that they would, but there were some people who applied who then, it still was, it, it still somehow got caught in the, the ghosts in the machine, if you will, right? And that, and not everybody was, got the information that, that people were interested. So I feel like we, we still need to, I, I need people to reach out. They can reach out to me, they can reach out directly to the building principal. If, if it's not, if they feel like they've gone through the HR process and then that, through the Google form last year, if that, if that went nowhere, I don't know.
So if I go right now on like Free Westford Friends and like post something about masks, I get like a hundred and eighty comments. Can we, so, my point being, there are like seven thousand people on these like Facebook groups in town. I think some of us maybe have posted things in the past, I think we've posted it to our, like, our school committee pages. I was thinking that it might be nice to have something that's graphical though, if, 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 if it seems like it makes sense to do something that's more of a social media friendly graphic.
Yeah.
Like, either selling people on how great it is to do it, or, or
Check the link.
Selling people on the urgent need, whatever it may be, maybe with a Q Arc, although if it's online, you don't need a Q Arc, but, but you hear what I'm saying, something that people are used to seeing something visually that they can, they can click on and follow. Because I do think that people, there are people in this community that, that have the time and, and, I would think, and hope they are interested, but
Yes.
They maybe just don't know.
I'm doing it on your account.
So, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask something that just dawned on me, does, do any of those lists talk to each other too? Because I've seen someone post about looking for substitutes for cafeteria staff. So, is it like one funnel first, like if some, does, does someone indicate interest in helping anywhere and those lists are shared? Or is that, like, you would have to say, I'm interested in substitute teaching, or I'm interested in cafeteria health?
Those are, those are typically totally separate things, right? So like, when we have, we have a, a nursing subpool, we have a custodial subpool. The cafeteria is trying to establish a subpool because they have very specific needs. They have to have the help, the food safety training and, and things that are slightly different. It all ultimately funnels through school spring as well too, so I mean, we, whether they can, whether there are people who know that they could do all of those things, because there are some people who would be able to do that. But they are, they are such different, I think they're such different needs that they don't typically look for like one thing in a checklist, right? We, we normally stick with grade levels, right? Like grade levels that people are most comfortable working with or whatever.
I guess when, when I think about, of communication push,
Yeah.
some sort of inclusive line
Yeah.
to say like, if, if you're not interested in six days, six hours in front of kids, maybe you're interested in four hours of helping get the lunch out.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
And, and just so anyone who's watching, Chris, what are the qualifications? You need some, some college, correct, and a Corey check?
Yes, so, so you'd have to have a Corey check. We, we typically, in the past, we wanted people who, and it was, we, we had the college aspect to it because of, it was an age thing, right? So we had a lot of colleges, we had academy alum who would be available and we were saying, okay, you know what, we really don't We really don't want like your first or second year students, just because they're still, they could in theory be at the academy and just be a couple, they could have been at school together, right? So, we set, I think it was the third year, I think we wanted them, or was it the end of sophomore year? There was a specific stipulation, but that was the purpose. The purpose, the purpose was because we were trying to establish a specific age. So, there's not, you don't, it doesn't have to be a college, college degree versus a high school diploma. It was about, it was about age and maturity. So, it really comes down to, they really want to, you know, I think, help support students in a classroom. And yeah, they would, they would be able to pass a Cory check.
UMass Lowell have actually got a staffing kind of student job office. Might also be worth reaching out there.
Well, we have, we've communicated with, we've communicated with different schools, we've talked with UMass Lowell in the past. We have, we have, some of our leadership team has reached out to Pittsburgh State as well too because they have an excellent education program. And so, the challenge, the challenge with that right now, that most schools are back in session, is that it then becomes, you know, a conflict as to when people are available. We did benefit from that when a lot, when the colleges were remote as well. We had students who were in college who were able to come work with us in the schools because their classes were remote, so it worked out. I feel like we need to better communicate the flexibility, we need to better, you know, communicate what the actual need is.
We've had principals calling restaurants hoping people who have the evening or night crew might want some daytime hours.
Right, right.
Um, some nursing homes. For that same type of thing, if people want to double up, they've been very creative.
Yeah, wow.
And if we do want to catch those, you know, older college students who might be, you know, home for a long winter breaks. And they might be able to help during that, you know, busy holiday cold season. Having something that's kind of social media friendly, that's usually how they get their info.
Well, one of the things that does help with, that would work with everybody too, is that specifically it's happened with our students in the past, is they'll start in the winter break and then they're in our system. So, then if they're, if they're home for spring break, they could do two days and they wouldn't have to go through this whole process again because they're in the system. Then they come back in May and they could start right away without having to, you know, go through, because, I mean, you know, you wouldn't want to go through a whole job interview for spring break, right?
Does it still work off, or I'm not too sure how it works here, the app, that once you're in the system, that if you decide you want, you're available to work Thursday, there's an app that you can check to see, oh, I'm available. So, you're able to kind of click to say you're able to take that substitute. I'm not sure how it's working here.
They're still able to see what is being requested and people can still sign up for things, they can still, the biggest challenge there, right? And this is what happens, is we don't have enough to fill everything. So, a substitute will sign up to cover so-and-so's class on Thursday because it's, you know, a content area that they're really familiar with and they want to do that. They show up at the school and the principal doesn't have enough coverage for anybody else, they need to move that person. The majority of people are really flexible about that. Some people, that's not what they signed up for, so they're not happy about it, right? So, that's the danger of that idea that now that there's so much information, that people can see exactly what they could potentially sign up for. As opposed to in the days of old when it was like, you would get the call, you know, at five o'clock in the morning, like, can you go to the high school today? You know, I don't know what you're going to have, I don't know what they're going to have you do. That's how I started my whole career was subbing when I was in college, right? And you don't know what you're going to do, they're just, they're just asking you to show up.
So, what do you need from us tonight? This, because the need is there and we are supportive, so what do you need from us tonight?
Right, so I feel like if we get more specific information to you for social media push, that'll be great. I think you should be, hopefully, will be prepared. If you have other questions, I think it would be great if we could formalize at the next meeting, an actual change to the salary.
Fantastic.
Thank you, thank you guys. That moves us to the eight oh five, almost, eight oh five. Item, student enrollment updates. So, that's in your packet, the current enrollment. Any highlights that we should be looking at?
Other than this is our official October one.
Right.
Right, this is, this is the one that the, that the state counts as our official number for the entire year. So, this is the number that will be associated with any funding and everything. And so, for that matter, I think we, well, we went up five students from last month, it was four, seven, five, two, I believe. So, we went up five for October numbers, right? I did not notice a big shift. Welcome, welcome to five of you, thank you. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't specifically see a shift that was important to highlight.
Questions from the committee? Oh, okay, thanks for that. Moving on to the Energy Savings Performance Audit Committee, that's a townwide committee, I'm going to bring in Paul Fox.
He's going back and forth between both meetings, huh?
Seriously?
That's funny.
He might need to, yeah.
Here comes Paul.
We don't have a screen.
Oh, he's over there. He'll be over there. Hello.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear us okay?
Am I good to talk about this?
Yeah, you have the floor, Paul, go ahead.
Well, did you get around me here tonight? Tonight, I just want to give a brief introduction, well, not so much necessarily an introduction because it's something that we've talked about in the past. But it's something that we're really seeing coming to fruition, right up and coming, especially to include at town meeting coming up this weekend. I would also like to mention that Matthew Rieger, part of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, is also on this web call, representing them and their support for this project. But the main reason that I'm here today is to ask for your continued support with this project, but also to provide some involvement specifically, hopefully, from a, from one of the members of this committee into what this project ultimately is. So, what this project is, is reviewing all energy consumption across the town of Westford collectively. Specifically speaking though, the town of Westford Public School System takes up seventy-five to eighty percent of building square footage across the town of Westford, a little over a million square feet. And the project that we're going after is an energy performance contract. And essentially, this is something that has been seen and utilized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a while. And it's basically a multi-phase process where a company is brought in via a qualification process to come and study and audit all of our buildings in terms of energy consumption. From there, they make a series of recommendations for what they believe the school system could do differently to include things like lighting upgrades, heating upgrades, and, you know, weatherproofing, just numerous building management controls and just anything related to energy efficiency or conservation or renewable energy projects. They look at all the schools and they say, hey, if we go forth, if we implement all of these types and systems, one, we will save on the operating budget, but two, the buildings themselves will be more efficient with what they have, or with what they have and how they're operating. So, when I put on my facilities hat, I'm very excited about this because so many of our items on the capital planning process line up with what this goal alludes to. And an example of that is that one of the items that's on our capital planning forecast is to replace all the air handlers on top of Westford Academy. All of them have reached end of life and it's a major budget, it's a big project to go after. However, if we include them in this energy performance contract, if we upgrade them to something that's more efficient, we'll be able to move forward and upgrade all those units while saving energy. And it just basically offers another avenue for us to explore and to go forth with. All of this is designed to be done at a cost of zero dollars to taxpayers. And that is because, again, we're saving money out of our operational budget and that's ultimately how we will be paying for this. So, it is designed to be budget neutral, but really allow us to look at what twenty-year savings would look like if we implement projects all upfront to begin with. So, it's a very complex process, it is something that majority of towns, I shouldn't say the majority, but a lot of towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have explored. I know that my first involvement with this project that I saw as a facilities director was the community, Dayton Merhobet. They did an energy performance contract and I truly encourage anybody that wants to get a better understanding, better synopsis via video to watch it. You just go to YouTube video and then again type in the Merhobet Energy Performance Contract. You know, it really just talks about a lot of these grade upgrades. For myself, again, as a facility director wearing the hat, we just have a great opportunity to provide all students, faculty and staff members with just new cutting-edge operating equipment, designed to hopefully, one, make their lives better, but two, create better operating conditions in the building. And I know that one of my first reference things was lighting. Lighting is so important to education and this would be something that we would see the whole entire school system being upgraded to LEDs across the board everywhere. So, again, very complex nature. One, first initial request is to ask for the continued support of this committee to go after energy efficiency projects and bettering our school systems from the facility standpoint. And then two, again, I'd like to ask for hopefully a member, if they are interested in this, in this process, to join us for the ride, sit in on the qualification process for selecting who our energy performance consultant would be. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions and I definitely want to give a great shout-out to Matthew again, who's joining us here from the Energy Committee. Who, you know, without his efforts, this would all not be possible. And thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Paul, and just to let you know, Matthew's here in person with us. And thank you for coming out and thanks for speaking so well about how important this is and the potential benefits. It's exciting to hear. And I guess, I guess first we'll open up to questions or comments from the committee.
I think it speaks for itself.
Just excitement, just. One question would be, do you want or need a formal vote of our support prior to special town meeting?
I think that that wouldn't hurt, but what would also yield great dividends is if it ever becomes, you know, a topic of debate at town meeting, I would definitely appreciate any support to advocate on behalf of this project. Again, there knowing that the town represents, or the town school buildings have the most to gain probably from this project. So, I would welcome a committee support and I can see if we can throw it on the article, but I think it may be too late to add it there. But, again, the support during town meeting would be truly the biggest benefactor from this.
What we could do is we could go into session at special town meeting Saturday morning, and, which we do anyway, and take a vote there and then we could speak to that. You know, we can get up and say that this presumably has some level of majority support of this committee, I'm anticipating. And we can, we can live in person report out that, does that sound helpful?
Yeah, that sounds absolutely fantastic.
Okay.
Truly thank you and hopefully all of you are in support of it and again, happy to elaborate on any of it more.
Okay, and then the other piece is the representation from this committee. That's something I will solicit now if there's interest. And then what I would probably do is see who's interested and we can make that appointment. The chair can just appoint that, so we can appoint that offline, but I will solicit interest at this point.
Paul, do you, do you know when that group would be meeting, what the time would be, just so people can make sure that it fits in their personal schedule?
Certainly, great questions. I have rough estimated time and Matt, please feel free to chime in. But I guess my response would be that right now we have the RFQ, the initial bid out there live and we expect to receive responses relatively soon. So, probably over the next two weeks or so, we'll be asking for probably a meeting or so, probably one meeting each week for probably about one to two hours for the next month or so, to try to narrow down and figure out who the selected applicant is. And that's probably phase one, and then phase two, we'd probably come at a later date, which could be the same person or preferably, probably, probably the same person to continue on through the steps. But that's two, if the, if the project continues on more forward past the study phase, to have some representation then. But I think just initially, the request is probably one to two hours each week for the next three or four weeks or so.
Do you anticipate if that'd be a daytime meeting probably, just so people know?
Yes, yes, I would anticipate that'd be a daytime committee meeting. Although the times have not been set yet, I know that there's going to be a member of the select board, hopefully a member of the school committee. Energy committee has at least two chairs and then a lot of it is a lot of department heads in town, including myself, finance director for the town, assistant town manager and a few other members as well.
Is it in person, Paul, or virtual, or how is the meeting actually happening?
That has not been determined yet. I can't really see Matt, so I'm curious to see what his face is.
He's wearing a mask.
I expect, oh, based, we're working with a consultant, he's helping us out with this. And we're trying to minimize your time, you're paid hourly, I would stand, it would be easier if you were.
Okay, so for those who couldn't hear, Matthew says because we're working with a consultant on this who's being paid hourly, to maximize and optimize time, remote probably makes a lot of sense. Valerie.
I just wanted to speak to some interest, I think it aligns with my role on capital committee, but happy to duke it out if someone else has some interest.
I was just going to do rock, paper, scissors, but.
I'm really undefeated in thumb war, but if you were.
I was thinking maybe like a squid game kind of, never mind.
Valerie, I think that's a great idea because of the overlap with finance and finance policy. And then we can talk about any energy policies that you think may come out of this, Paul, and where that might, what other subcommittees that might sit with. I think that's great.
I love how excited everyone gets when someone else volunteers. Everyone's like, we're asking important questions and then someone volunteers, like, yes, that totally makes sense.
Be on this committee. Is that any other, any other applicants? Okay.
Sounds great.
You got really lonely over there all of a sudden.
I know.
We shifted everybody over here. Okay, so it sounds like Valerie will likely be the appointee, Paul.
That's fantastic, thanks so much, I appreciate you volunteering, Valerie, thank you.
Anything else, Paul, before we move on to the Robinson Playground?
Not for myself, again, I will make sure that I do my best to keep this committee very involved with the actions from behind it. With a successful project, there will be a lot of pretty significant changes, I'd like to think, from a building aesthetic and a building operations, including systems standpoint, where I think a lot of people will be more comfortable with the environment that they're in.
Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
And we will, as we said, the school committee will meet, we'll come into session before special town meeting on Saturday morning and just take a vote of support for the committee.
Special town meeting.
We'll take a vote of support, I don't know if it'll pass.
Remember, it's at one o'clock.
At one o'clock, did I say morning?
Said in the morning, so.
Well, I'm going at, just getting my seat ready and everything, you know.
Are you taking the PSATs?
Okay, so that's great, let's move on to Robinson Playground Committee, also to Mr. Fox. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Perfect, this one, we can do nice and quick and easy as well. So, we have, to try to jump back a little bit, we went forward, we did the design study with the tennis courts. And it's really yielded a great visual product, just not actually into fruition in reality yet. So, what we're hoping to plan and achieve is to establish a smaller design working group to work on the design of already approved funding for the Robinson Playgrounds. This is the pre-K playground and then a little bit of a renovation and repair to the existing first and second grade playground that's over there. to the existing, uh, uh, first and second grade playground that's over there. Um, the end product will hopefully be that, uh, in the really early stages of summer, hopefully, um, the Robinson Elementary School's exterior landscaping is under pretty significant construction, seeing, uh, eight new tennis courts and one renovated playground with one brand-new playground taking part all at the same time here. Um, so something that I wish I probably had implemented earlier in the past, but I would like to, um, specifically continue moving forward to ask for representation on much larger projects, not construction, building projects, uh, hopefully from the school committee, if somebody wants to, uh, be a part of the building design and, uh, represent more of this cooling system, more so than myself from just the facility side of it. Um, I would truly appreciate the support of the committee, but always know that I'm happy to continue to carry on, and I will always create a working group. I believe that, uh, multiple set of eyes and experience and levels of knowledge always yields the best product. Um, so this is just a basic formal invitation from myself to this committee if somebody's interested in partaking in on a design, um, of the Robinson Elementary Two Playgrounds. Um, I'm happy to have you, or happy to welcome you to a committee, or rather, a working group to, uh, go ahead and do justice. Um, from a timing commitment standpoint, this would again probably be about one hour for, eh, for probably a week to every other week for the next two months. Um, and it will be virtually, we'll be meeting with our engineer, uh, Nesra Consulting, and most of it can be done online.
Okay. Do you anticipate any other, who, besides consultant, you are representative, who else might be there at the meeting?
Sure, so I've heard from a couple of interested parents, um, also some, uh, committee mem-, uh, not committee members, uh, town, uh, just town community members. Um, specifically one who spoke at, um, town meeting who expressed some interest in making sure that the budget matched up with the project. Um, so I'm anticipating inviting, um, that person here to the project as well. Um, again, completely open, open practice here, I'm, don't wanna try to hide anything. So I'm gonna guess that it's probably gonna be a working group around seven people or so.
Okay, great. Thank you for, for just being so thoughtful about the process that you're using to do this. I think it's really nice and inclusive, and, uh, really appreciate that. Uh, c- committee, any questions or volunteers to be, to design a playground? I mean, it doesn't get much better than that.
I'm, I'm happy to, to volunteer unless there's anybody else. I kinda feel, my kids are at a young enough age wearing playgrounds a lot. You know, worked in school, so happy to do it if, unless anyone else wants to go for it.
I don't see anybody, yeah. Well, I do be perfect for this.
Great.
It just makes sense.
I know.
Okay, I, I think we have our, I think we have our designee, Catherine.
Awesome.
Fun. This is a nice one.
This is a fun one. And hear me out.
So are we done with Mr. Fox?
We are done with Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Paul.
Paul, thank you so much for sticking around.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the continued help and support. Uh, look forward to continuing working with each of you. Thank you.
Excellent. We'll see you soon.
Thanks, Paul.
Have a good night.
Yes.
Okay, that's good stuff. Okay, eight-thirty agenda item, Westford DEI Committee Letter to School Committee. And so just the preference, we, we, we referenced this letter a few weeks ago from the Town DEI Committee asking the school committee and the school department to look at the, the history of, of blackface historically in the, in the country, but perhaps also in the district, um, and to further that conversation and that education, uh, going forward. I think you were, you know, we've talked, I think you wanted to-
Yeah, so you, so, um, when, when you shared the letter, uh, with us, then we looked at this as, I, I think, a great opportunity to be proactive in, in, in supporting, I think, a larger discussion. Um, so one of the things that, that there, that the letter, they're specifically asking us to look at how we have included this history in our, in our curriculum. And so that's the first thing that we wanna make sure that, um, that we're able to identify where they, where they are actually addressing this. And so we've been working with the curriculum coordinator, uh, Curriculum Coordinator for Social Studies, Adam Ngano, and Janet Kirstedt, who's our Curriculum Coordinator for English Language Arts. We thought that those two, uh, those two aspects of the humanities program specifically at Westford Academy, they are typically engaging in different types of rich discussion about a large variety of, of topics and topics. And so, so we wanted to talk with them about it specifically. And, um, Adam was able to remind us that there are very specific parts of U.S. history where they, where it is part of the curriculum. And so as we were having this conversation now, knowing that we're also leading up to their Spirit Week, where, as referenced in the letter, there has been some choices in the past that, that whether intentional or not, it could end up being hurtful to some of our students. And so they've been talking about how, instead of it, how, how could this be an authentic educational conversation, right? And so the idea of bringing the conversation into very specific classes. And so what they're talking about, knowing that we have, you know, with the Boston Marathon the other day too, right, the, the option of the, the marathon versus the sprint. Well, part of this is very much still gonna be a sprint, because we wanna make sure that, that the conversations are taking place before Spirit Week. But in the biggest picture, we're then gonna go back and, and, and have a, a broader look at how we can make sure that it's continually, that this, that this type of communication is continually being, um, I think, shared with the students, even starting in eighth grade with civics, right? As a part of, as, as they're moving into the academy. So in talking with both Janet and Adam, they had also already started talking with, uh, Principal Antonelli. I shared the letter with Principal Antonelli and talked with him about it as well too. And they actually have a great idea in terms of bringing both the discussions, the s- the small group discussions in the classroom with the teachers who have, I think, had more, more opportunities to have different types of, of discussions like this. So having them specifically in their history classes and their English Language Arts classes, but also leading with a more general PSA, um, that Mr. Antonelli's gonna work with them to create, that's gonna kind of put it all into context, knowing that they now have this week and next week leading up to that following Friday before they have their official spirit-
Rally.
Rally, thank you. Um, and so it was great having the conversations just with those individuals already and talking about, they were able to highlight, uh, Mr. Ngano specifically was able to talk about how they're gonna be able to re- preview for students who haven't necessarily had this curriculum yet, right? And then use that as a learning opportunity to kind of remind the students who have already had it, like why they had those discussions in the first place, and kind of bring that to the forefront so that it's not something that, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, I think we talked about that once, but really bringing it, I think, front and center as they go into, um, as they go into their Spirit Week. So I, I thought it was a great, it was, it was, um, it was a great opportunity. I'm, I'm thankful that, um, the Town DEI Committee had, had drafted this letter and sent it to us to ask us to explore this. Um, and so it's, it's resulted in, I think, a, a really authentic sort of exploration, which I'm optimistic is going to, I think, set the stage so that people have a greater understanding as to why some things are offensive, right? And why some things, some people might not necessarily understand it. They don't necessarily understand the history of things, and that's the most important piece, because it would be easy to just say, no, you can't do that. But if we don't actually have a conversation as to why we're calling this practice into question in the first place, then I feel like we're missing this, this strong learning moment.
Would it be possible, as we go along in the next week on this conversation, in the sprint, but also in the marathon, to report back, um, you know, on materials used? Or, you know, you mentioned a PSA. I think it'd be really valuable as a committee, but I think as a community, to see the ways that these difficult conversations can happen in a classroom. So I don't know what, what makes sense for that. You guys, you know, would, could tell us, but if there's a way to have at least a sampling of artifacts or whatever it may be from the conversation, e- even if it's just a prompt, like here's a prompt-
Yeah.
-that some of our teachers are using-
Yeah.
-to, to start the conversation, or here's a video, or here, whatever it may be. I think that'd be, I, I would love to see that personally.
So I would add to that, that, as policy subcommittee, when this first came to us, because one of the first questions was, do we need a policy for this? And we said, no, all of our policies say don't do these kinds of things. Um, you know, our dress code, our bullying and harassment policies, all of those policies are already there. We had talked about, there's two points of communication. There's the communication to the students, which is the education part of it, and then there's the answering of, to, back to the Town DEI, and like you said, to the community as a whole. So I would also like to see, like, as you wrap up the conversation with the students and present back to us, there should be a formal recognition to the DEI, to the Town DEI, that this is how we answered it. Not just doing it and then reporting to us, but also to, you know, use that relationship that we're building with the Town DEI and communicate back to them. You brought us this concern, this is how it was addressed in our buildings. To just bring it full circle so that it goes, it, it, how do I wanna phrase that? It keeps open the line of communication. They have communicated a concern, we have addressed it, we then communicate it back to them, so that we can continue to do with that with them in the future.
So is that, is that better done in, in a letter? Or in an invitation to a conversation at a meeting?
Oh. I don't know.
I don't know either.
Give them the option.
Maybe give them the option of joining the meeting.
So maybe, maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's what the communication is, starts as, right? Like this is, let, we wanna, we thank you for this, we thank you for this information, we wanna give you an update as to the way in which we took this information, and, and we would, which could include the different things we're talking about. And then we'd love to have an ongoing discussion with this, about this with you, if you'd love to, if you, you know, if you'd be able to join one of our meetings.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Gloria?
Another aspect, you know, I'd, I'd like to add to the discussion is, while, you know, as a policy subcommittee, we've looked at our policies, a- and we acknowledge that a display of blackface, flat, blackface would not be, you know, permitted under our policy. There, there is a need to acknowledge that that policy hasn't always aligned with past practice. And whether in intentional or not, um, we know that in DEI matters, it's not necessarily the intent, it's impact that we need to be concerned with. And, um, and there has, in the past, um, been negative impact on certain students. And this is supposed to be a celebratory time, it's a much-needed celebratory time, um, especially now. And we want to make sure that, that there is no continuing negative impact, and that we want to rectify that, so that this is a, a celebration that everyone can enjoy and participate wi- without hesitation, concern, controversy. Um, it, it's a celebratory event for the students. So I hope we can have these important discussions. I love the fact that it's being done in an authentic educational way, and I hope that those pre-conversations can happen and then lay the groundwork for just a fantastic, fun, spirited, celebratory day for all, that everybody can enjoy in, in just the positive spirit that a spirit rally should be.
Okay.
Would, would you be willing to collaborate with me on that written response? Because I feel like they wrote to the committee.
Yep.
So if I wrote by myself, I could also be like, come on in and meet with me anytime you want. But it's more about joining all of us, right? So I feel like if it's coming from the two of us together, it would make sense.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for this. With that, we will move on to the personnel update, which is in your packet.
I didn't specifically have anything to highlight, unless anyone had a question.
I did not.
No, but sometimes you see a name on here and you think-
Yeah.
Oh.
I, I really appreciate seeing the date of hire. You, you know, I think it, it does let you look, kinda go down the list and, and recognize, uh, some people who've put in really long years of service to the district. And I, I always, because I, sometimes you don't know them, right? If you're in a parent in another d- school, you know, you don't necessarily know every person in every school. So it's nice to, it's nice to recognize that. Okay.
Is the, um, central office interim admin assist- assistant, is that already the, in HR? Is that the-
That is, that is the, that's the interim position-
Oh, great.
-that we're, yes, that we have for that third person.
Right.
That's that.
Awesome.
Starting next week. Great.
Yep.
Fantastic.
With the air. Okay. That concludes all the business on our agenda. If no one has anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Gloria with the motion, Alicia with the second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.